Call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of meeting held May 13th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We have three people wishing to address the board on a non-agenda item. You will have five minutes each to address us. And Sarah Anderson, I'll ask you to go first and if you'll step up to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please. And it says you're against the changes, so...
Yes, thank you. My name is Sarah Anderson. I live at forty-three oh four South Magnolia Avenue. I want to echo what all the other public came up and talked about in the April board meetings. We had a few speakers and a few students, so I'm really proud of those students for once for coming and standing here because it's not easy to do, so they should be very proud of themselves. One of the students, Eliza Collinor, addressed the social aspect and the friend groups about being in these classes. And I think it touches on the mental health. I think it could really have an adverse effect on mental health with our kids. It's an epidemic, not only in our town but across the country. And I think cutting that out of their daily lives could really be detrimental to that. So that's kind of what I wanted to touch on is we are, I don't know anybody that's in favor of cutting that time, and I think we all agree that it's important to have that. During the campaign, all four candidates for school board were against cutting time. So I think, and we've talked to teachers, I know you guys have heard about the surveys that parents have sent out to teachers and asking them, and the results of those surveys are overwhelmingly stating, do not take a time away from those classes, that there is chaos, but that's not the answer. And I echo that. I mean, there's many things that come out of those classes, but to me, my biggest concern is the mental health of the kids. They're at school all day, teachers are really first responders, and if they can see and notice that in those kids, I think we should listen to them if they think it'd be detrimental. So I think if we could table this until next year, let the new board come in and have some input. I know a lot of money was spent on this process, and so I hope that's not something that's holding us back from not taking their advice. So I think that's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and next will be Addie DeWitt, and if you will also step to the microphone, give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Addie DeWitt, and my address is two-two-zero-zero South Bonson Avenue.
Go ahead.
I just finished elementary school, and I want to say thank you to the teachers and staff who made elementary school so much fun. I had a really fun time in specials. They also helped me to focus on learning and be less fidgety. Kindergarteners can be really fidgety, and specials can really help them be less fidgety. It can also help teach you stuff that we use in the classroom. Also, I have a friend from school who is really good at art, and I probably would not know how good she was at art, and she might not be as good at art without art classes. Thanks again for making elementary school great, and please make sure my younger friends can have that, too.
Thank you. And next, Heather DeWitt. If you also would step to the microphone, give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, you've heard from me before, I'm Heather DeWitt. My address is twenty-two hundred South Bonson Avenue. So I'll specify right from the beginning that I'm kind of talking at the board a little bit this time because I think I may be asking it to be in your court, because the administration has worked really hard on this, but I'm not quite happy with how it's going. So I heard, we heard, that this is a scheduling decision, but I don't think it is. A scheduling decision would mean adjusting the time of day that things are occurring. But what this would do, if you really do four-time, a four-day rotation, that would mean kids have class twenty-six less times a year, and that's thirty-eight percent fewer class periods. I get that it's more time each class period, but even if it's a different length of time, it's a significant curriculum decision and one that's not good for the kids. This would mean kids would have potentially music on Wednesday and not have it again till the following Tuesday. I don't remember things well after that long of a break. I don't think the kids would either. If class is only forty-five, forty-eight minutes every four days, that means the kids lose fifteen percent of their instructional time in art, music, and PE. So that would be a budget decision, a curriculum decision, and access to education decision. It's not just a scheduling decision. It's not just moving when things happen, but it's changing what actually happens. So therefore, I am asking the board, our elected representatives, to take action and protect the education of our children. So I heard you say the elementary schedule is like a Rubik's Cube. I think you're right. So my daughter has been working on this Rubik's Cube for a ridiculously long time. I'm kind of sick of looking at it, but she keeps getting stuck. And just when she thinks she's almost done, another square's in the wrong spot. She hasn't given up. I think you've put a thousand times the hours into this schedule than what she's put into her Rubik's Cube. I think it's so much more complicated, and I think you know that, and that you've invested more than I can imagine, I mean, more than I could understand, in this schedule. But taking fifteen percent out isn't the solution. So I'm asking you maybe wait another school year, do maybe just a one-school pilot. I mean, I'm not asking you to throw away hours and hours of hard, hard work, because I get that, but it isn't a whole cube anymore if you take out part of art, music, and PE. I also heard you say you want to build a better mousetrap. I don't think you're wrong on that one either. But sometimes different isn't better. Sometimes it's not good if it doesn't still catch mice. So I think a mousetrap that doesn't catch mice isn't a mousetrap at all. Therefore, one, a schedule that cuts a significant portion of our curriculum isn't just a schedule change at all. I think that what that is, is a change in curriculum. I'm curious if maybe the software that DMG offers can do a schedule that doesn't take a cut like that. If they can't, maybe it's time to give up on that software. If they can, maybe let's look more closely at those options. I heard you ask us to trust the process, and I tried, I promise, I tried to trust, I tried to wait, but I think when all we've come up with after this time is adding three minutes to class periods and still having to be a four-day rotation, still losing fifteen percent for our kids, that the process isn't working as it sits, and maybe there's some pieces that need to be added. I heard you say you took our feedback, but I don't know how you could look at the research, the data, and the stories that we've given you and still be thinking about fifteen percent cut. So I'll say it again, art, PE, and music are essential for our children. They deserve more than just exposure to these areas. They deserve education, and that takes time because they're whole people. And so I'm just asking you to please make sure that kids like my Addie can finish fifth grade and say that they loved it. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Deanne, good news report.
Good evening. Once again, the Sioux Falls School District is pleased to be a provider of free lunch and in some locations, breakfast also to any child ages zero to eighteen during the summer months. Our programs begin in our locations on Monday, June third, but some locations in the community actually started their meals already today. This information has been sent to all families with encouragement to take advantage of this opportunity. There's no paperwork that needs to be filled out, no income eligibility. Anyone in the ages zero to eighteen are able to participate in these free meals. You should have a poster in front of you for your reference as I talk a little bit further here. Specifically tonight, I wanted to tell you about a really great collaboration that occurred between some key organizations in our community. As we always do, the district put together a flyer, and we shared it with our schools for inclusion in their school newsletters. And of course, we had intentions of sending an email out and a phone call, as I just mentioned. Then we had a chance discussion with Mary Michaels from the City Health Department, who was down here in this room for another event with our PATH committee. And then subsequently, just a day later, there was a chance discussion with Feeding South Dakota and Jennifer Stensis, and we were talking, Jennifer's over here, there she is. We were talking about the backpack program and the distribution of those backpacks in the summer, and how very important those food bags are to our families who really need them. So before we knew it, the Sioux Falls Food Council was involved, and there was a great discussion about the city's free bus rides on Sioux area metro. It's called the Freedom Pass for all middle and high school students. And that can be a very valuable asset for children to get to the sites where free meals are offered, in addition to other locations throughout our community. So the flyer that you have in front of you is the result of those conversations. We simply had our locations to start with, and you can see that there are many other community-wide locations on here as well. In addition to the times and the dates, there's information about the backpack program and the Feeding South Dakota pantry location, how to access that, in addition to the Freedom Pass information, and then a handy-dandy map on the backside to help families understand Sioux area metro and which routes and which locations they can get on and take to those feeding sites. And seriously, none of this would have happened without Alyssa Galey, who is back here in the back row trying to hide. She is the program coordinator with the city of Sioux Falls in the Health Department, and really stepped up and brought everybody together, combining all of the information that is so important and so valuable to our families. And I just thought it was a really great example of how those conversations, chance discussions, and then putting some purposeful effort behind those discussions can really turn into something that has all the information on it that you could ever want or need. And this is being shared throughout our community, and we'll be posting these in our school windows, so if somebody's just on the playground to enjoy a sunny afternoon, if that ever happens, they might be able to see this and take advantage of this opportunity. So I just really thought it was important to applaud the partners. It's a small effort, but I really think it shows how great things can happen when our organizations all work together for the real benefit of our students. So kudos to all of those partners who had a hand in this and making food available to our families throughout those summer months, when we know that it can get tough for some families, so...
It's going to the district website as well.
I'm sorry?
Will it be on the district website?
Yes, yes, it will be. Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. Appreciate that. All right, no conflicts of interest, and motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm asking for items five and six to be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, then we'll take action on those two items before we get to the rest of the consent agenda. So item five is approval of administrative working agreement. Could I get a motion to approve that, please?
Second.
Okay, and discussion?
I'm not against the agreement in a whole, there were just a few items.
All right, and since there are four of us here, Kate Parker is on family vacation, since the potential for a tie is there, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this one. In favor, aye. Opposed, no. So we'll start, Board Member Tulkey?
Aye.
Board Member Mickelson?
No.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
And Board Member Alberti, aye. So that carries. Then item six, approval of salary schedules.
I think there needs to be, first, before we discuss, a change on item six B three. That has two-hundred-and-eight days, but then if you go later to six E, it has two-hundred-and-ten days. So Todd, which should it be?
Two-hundred-and-ten.
So that's just a clear...
Oh, it is both.
It is both. So there's, okay, there's one, it's not in both, so that's where I was confused, and we had two-forty-one, there's two-o-eight above, but there's only two-ten and vice versa. So that's where I was confused. See, because here it's just two-o-eight. Yeah, okay, because then the other ones, they matched up, that's why I was just confused on that, directly on that. So that's why it was my question on that. So, and then, but yes, and for the same reason on the contract, there was, the schedule goes with that, so that's why I'm opposed.
Okay, then we'll go, item six, we'll take item six A. Could I get a motion to approve item six A, executive administrative staff?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote on that as well. Board Member Tulkey?
Aye.
Board Member Mickelson?
No.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
Alberti, aye. Then six B, roll call on that, could I get a motion to approve administrative staff?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on that. Board Member Tulkey?
Aye.
Board Member Mickelson?
No.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And then we'll do C, can we do C through H all as one, or...
Yep.
Okay, we'll do six C through H, and we'll also, I'd like a motion to approve...
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call on that as well. Tulkey?
Aye.
Mickelson?
Aye.
Ryder?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it goes pass. Then we'll go back to a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and it takes us to nine supplemental consent agenda. Claims to Sanford, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second, I'll second that, and we will vote on items nine A, one, two, and three altogether. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, same sign, none, but there are two abstentions, Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. And we are now on to the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Alberti. The reports of the superintendent tonight begin with the Classrooms to Careers report. That report comes to us from the Department of Curriculum Services, and will be presented by Dr. Teresa Boyson.
Good evening. Classroom to Careers is a community effort, and we have a couple of representatives here tonight from the community, so I'd like to acknowledge them. We have Carla Hogan from Sanford, one of the supporters of Classroom Careers. Thanks, Carla, for being here. And then we have Ben Valdez from Southeast Tech. Thanks for being here, Ben. So Classroom to Careers is an opportunity for students and the businesses in the community to come together to provide opportunities for high school and seniors to earn dual credit while in high school. This program's another way that the Sioux Falls District's working to prepare students to be college and career-ready. Through Classroom to Careers, local businesses have provided opportunities to students in their transition from high school to post-secondary education. When we think of the strategic plan that drives all we do in the district, the priority area falls under is student outcomes. The priority statement number one, the Sioux Falls District will provide effective and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap. And then the initiative to continue to expand and evaluate multiple pathways for students and to prepare them for college and career readiness, differentiated and engaging pathways. So how do we do that? With community partnerships. So the Sioux Falls District's committed to providing those multiple pathways for students to be engaged, motivated, self-regulated learners, to find courses to help them achieve their career goals. Classroom to Careers creates an opportunity for all community businesses to become partners in the Classroom to Careers movement. Currently, Sanford Health, First Premier, and City of Sioux Falls, who are sponsors of Classroom to Careers, support students who face financial hardships, are first in the families to attend post-secondary school, or have challenges that may have prevented them from exploring post-secondary opportunities. The sponsorship provides funding for dual-credit scholarships, textbooks, a career developer that can help support those students in that post-secondary education and employment opportunities throughout the community. The Classroom to Careers is different than what we have currently in Sioux Falls School District, as these students, twenty-five students in, at Washington High School, have the opportunity to take the coursework offered by the Southeast Tech professors in their high school, so on Washington's campus. And that will start the fall of two thousand nineteen. The Southeast Tech will provide the first two courses, and it's Student Success and English one hundred, and then we have a Classroom Careers developer, too, and that developer helps identify student goals, career goals, connect them with businesses that are a good match for that career goal, to provide job shadows and intern opportunities, so that way they can really hone in on what they want to do post-secondary. That developer will also support the students in their next steps after high school, breaking down the barriers that might exist, as we know, completing that FAFSA, those college applications, and other scholarship documents that go with that. The first courses are designed to give students a chance to see themselves as post-secondary, as part of that post-secondary institution. The Classroom to Careers developer will encourage them, empower, and help them to take full charge of their future goals. As partnerships with the community grow, Classroom to Careers will be offered at all high school campuses, that's a goal. And we have created a little promotional video, well, I like to say "we," but that would be, Deanne's department has created a promotional video that we can use when we go out into the community to share what Classroom to Careers is all about, and I'd like to show that for you tonight. So as you can see, Classroom to Careers is a community partnership that provides opportunities for students who might not have that opportunity to pursue post-secondary. The community partnerships allow students to explore career options, transition to the next step after high school, and develop the future workforce of Sioux Falls. And with that, I ask for you to acknowledge the report, but stand by for questions.
Questions?
I just think this is so wonderful, and that First Premier, the city, and Sanford stepped up after we lost Learners to Leaders to do something like this, and the adjustments of being on campus to overcome the obstacle of transportation for these students and to help them future, because, I mean, as children of, both my husband and I did go to college, so we were at least familiar. That FAFSA's still overwhelming for us. So to have these options for our students, this is why we all ran for the school board, is to do exciting things to help students where they need to be helped, so thank you for doing this program.
Thanks. I think it's awesome that it's starting out with the kind of founding sponsors and where that goes, and what industries partner with us in the future will be fun to see, as we have more and more industries in Sioux Falls that have openings and are looking for these students who have the skills and the knowledge, but maybe lack the confidence or the resources. These are the exact connections that we need to make with our students and these business partners, so very exciting. And then just to clarify, it's juniors and seniors, right? You have to be a junior to be...
Correct.
... dual-credit?
For dual-credit, junior or senior, yes.
So then, would students be in the program for two years? Is that the idea?
They could be.
Okay.
They sure could, you know, so I could be a junior, do it for junior and senior year, or just a senior.
Senior, okay.
And then really trying to develop more coursework design toward their career field, especially if they're in it for a junior and senior year.
Sure, awesome, great.
Thank you. Great report. This is another one of those examples of the community seeing a need, and some of our major employees, employers, and the city stepping up to make sure that that need is met for all of the kids in the district. Southeast Tech, I know that, you know, coordinating all of this isn't... all of this isn't an easy piece, to coordinate between the post-secondary and K-12 at all. All those moving parts make so much of this, well, more difficult. And I appreciate the education professionals doing their jobs and making sure that our kids get the best that they can have. So thank you.
And we couldn't do it without those community partnerships, so we're thankful for those, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Could I get a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
Same move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. On to the next report.
Our next report is the 2020-2021 School Calendar Recommendation. This report comes to you from Administrative Services, and I think the last time you received a report from this guy, he dubbed himself the Calendar Guy. We still call him Dr. Nold, our Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Administrative Services.
This is another great reason to be on the school board. The Calendar Committee Report Recommendation comes to you this evening for the 2021 School Year Calendar. And the purpose of this report is obviously to present that recommendation from the Calendar Committee for your consideration for adoption. Tying this back to the strategic plan, the key part of this is really to gather that feedback from all stakeholders in our community. So when we look at the strategic plan and fulfilling that mission, the one portion that we did is expanded the Calendar Committee slightly this year from what we had had as 25 members to 29, with addition of some additional parents and other groups to be represented on there that are part of our employment contract groups. So that was represented on this committee as well. In doing that, we expanded the group to 29 members. The big part in this is when we prepared for the 1819 School Year Calendar, which we did in the spring of 2017, we really did an extensive feedback, community feedback session. We had over 11,000 different community responses. We had feedback sessions that we held at different school locations, and really took information from our community. And the Calendar Committee at that time created the calendar that we used for this past year, for this, well, past year now, and going through for the 1819. For the 1920 School Year Calendar, we maintained that because they had not experienced that calendar yet until this year. So we really held on to some of those same things with the start and end date. We looked at some of the things within the calendar itself, but then starting for this 2021 School Year Calendar, we then again sought out that community feedback and information. And in doing so, we sent out two different surveys. The surveys that were sent out had 8,600 responses on the first survey and 7,800-plus responses on the second survey. And the information that was asked in those two separate, very short surveys, the highlights of that, the majority were in favor of a very short first week of school, which is something that we heard on the Calendar Committee. We wanted to affirm that with the survey information, but over 76% of the individuals responded that they'd prefer that short week. That started this year with a two-day week on a Thursday, Friday, and then went into that next week with a four-day week prior to the Labor Day break. The majority were also in favor of a four-day Labor Day break in there, 66%. The majority also wanted the school year to start prior to the Labor Day break, which is very consistent to what we saw with that information from the spring of 2017, the numbers being virtually the same, but 63% almost in favor of that prior to Labor Day start for the school year. And then the majority wanted the school year to end prior to the Memorial Day break that we just had, with 62% there. Some of the additional information we looked at, besides the survey information, was the start dates surrounding the schools that we share services with, predominantly being the CTE, but some other services that we shared with schools. But we looked at that information on the Calendar Committee. We also wanted to look at ending early in a week so we could allow for inclement weather. So prior to the Labor Day, or Memorial Day weekend, ending the school year earlier in the week so that we did have days for inclement weather, we could try to still fit that within that same week, which is part of our agreement with the semester tests, to have those both occur within the same week. That became a little harder this year, as we had a few more days, but we did get that in, as you know, this past Thursday, Friday. We also looked at future calendars. So we looked, the Calendar Committee looked at 10 years out, what would happen with the calendars, so we could look at some consistency, so families could plan out. And many of those families do look at that information and try to plan out at least two years in advance sometimes on those vacations that they do take, or family events that they have. So we looked at future calendars, 10 years out, days off within the school year, and then the impact of in-service, so we could maximize that in-service time. The Calendar Committee also looked at what we could set as a consistency. So we really talked about starting with that two-day week, Thursday, Friday, then looking at the four-day Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and a four-day Labor Day weekend for upcoming years. As we consider calendars for the upcoming years, we really set those tentative guidelines for future Calendar Committees to look at. But really with the feedback that we've had over the past three years with the survey information and the community input, we set that in place for the Calendar Committee to use as a tentative guideline. The Calendar Committee also agreed to tentatively work to conclude the school year prior to that Memorial Day weekend break. So those were a couple of things that we tried to generally agree upon, so we could give people consistency within our community. We did look then also to focus on a few different days within the school year. A couple of those that I'd highlight, Native American Day and Martin Luther King Day, were two things that we did consider, and you'll see in the calendar that those days, one of which is a no, is a non-school day, and the other of which will be a non-student day with in-service on that. We looked at the staff in-service dates to make sure those were not on a Friday or an extended weekend, starting out with an in-service, to maximize that time. We also did that with the high schools, as you recall, that we implemented that, that they would not have the early start, early dismissal, in-service, so we could maximize that time. Shorter breaks throughout the calendar, and then minimizing missed staff and student days, depending on where we had those days off. A couple of highlights from this year's calendar proposal from the Calendar Committee, the school day would start on August 27. October 12 is a no-school day with Native American Day, January 14 being the end of the first semester, January 18 a no-school, it's an in-service day for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and then the last day being May 25, which I believe is a Tuesday that it would conclude on. So the administrative recommendation is to propose and have approved the 2021 School Year Calendar based on the Calendar Committee's work and recommendation, as detailed in the attachment. I would stand by for any questions.
Questions for the Calendar Guy.
I just think the committee, it's a lot of work. Heather talked about the Rubik's Cube, this calendar, it's like that, that when you move one, it moves a lot. And I think everybody was heard, and we worked around those issues, and well, and kind of waited to see what the South Dakota High School Athletic Association did with some sporting events, too. And I think this is good. And we also are meeting what, when the vote occurred a few years ago, by the later August start, I feel like we're acknowledging that in the start date, too.
We tried to maintain that at a later date than years previous to that.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Really nice job putting the puzzle together into the Calendar Committee. Looks great. Okay. Good job. Well, I've been on the board a long time. Everybody is pretty aware of that. And I've talked about Martin Luther King Jr. Day and Native American Day, and asked about having those off. And I guess this is proof that if you just quietly drop those hints long enough, it'll happen.
It might listen.
Quietly, yeah. So, all right. Thank you. Good work. Could I get a motion to approve the proposed calendar for 2021?
Same move.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Jamie. Very good.
The third report this evening is a Capital Improvement Plan Update, coming to you from our Department of Operational Services and presented by Jeff Kreider.
Good evening. I'm going to get out of the way pretty quick here. So it's kind of a milestone for us for the high school projects tonight. We have Vanessa Schutte that's going to be presenting the plans for the, the final plans for the high school. And then we have Tony Wiseman with Journey Group that's going to be presenting and hopefully getting your approval for the guaranteed maximum price GMP for the construction. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Vanessa. And Mitch, Mitch with Aldinger is here with Architecture Incorporated. We're all here to answer any questions that you might have. And we're pretty open. And I think I'm going to turn it over and get it started. It's a pretty exciting time for us, and I think we'll be underway pretty quickly here.
Thank you, Jeff. Oops. So at the start of every meeting, I share the "We See" statement that was developed at the very foundation of the project. So we see a safe, technology-driven, adaptable environment where our diversity-rich community of inquiry-based learners can take pride and ownership of their education while continuing to champion the Sioux Falls School District tradition of excellence. We've gone back to this statement throughout the process, ensuring that we're making the right decisions with the design of the building. When we have tough decisions, this is where we go. So again, I'm sure some people, I always joke we should have a t-shirt made, but we don't have that t-shirt yet. To start with, this is a site plan. I will tell you, it's slightly outdated, but this is the rendered version. There are minor changes to how this is implemented. But you can see that we have the athletic fields and practice areas to the north. North is actually to your left in this image. We have the main entry drive right here as you approach the main entrance to the building. The building is zoned, more of a public activity area on this side, and more of a classroom activity over on this side, with parking wrapping around the building. And we are maintaining the possibility for expansion in the future. Okay? So that's been thought about with the overall site plan. Good movement through, so there's more than one way in or out, so that traffic is not challenging after a game or when school gets out. And so that's nice and works really well on the site. As we move into the floor plan, just to let you know, since the last time we shared the floor plan, we've met with user groups twice, reviewing all the rooms, how the spaces work with them. We tweaked the plan after the first meeting to meet those needs. And then we had a confirmation meeting to confirm that we implemented the changes that they requested, because we want to make sure that every aspect is touched. So we have met with them, each user group, twice, and have everything in place according to their desires that was agreed upon with the district leadership. But as we walk through, we have our main entrance here, like I mentioned, the idea of eyes on the site, seeing who's coming to the building before they get there is important. So the offices in the administration area look to those approaching the building. We have a secure vestibule entry piece here as you come in, and you look into the courtyard, not right into the admin area. This courtyard was requested by the students early on in the process for a safe place to go throughout the day to get outside. It's not shown here, but there is actually a fenced area there so that the students can go to that space. But you'll also notice this little door here. That's a control point as well. So nights and weekends, if there's activities happening in the gym or the auditorium, these doors can be locked and the rest of the school is not open to everyone. Do you have your comments? As I mentioned, the gym is located here. There is a walking track, top-loading gym in this area here. So we're really taking advantage of the natural grade on the site, so that you actually come in from the top down for this gym. We also have the, on this side, weight room, gymnastics, that's part of the storm shelter. On the lower level, we have wrestling and more locker rooms, again, part of the storm shelter to serve the space, serve the school. And this is the activity gym right here, and this is a secondary access point. So to gain access to the fields to the north for practices, or if PE decides to go outside, they have that easy access right here, as well as a drop-off area for teams that are visiting, they can come in and have access to the locker room area. Going back upstairs, this is your kitchen and back-of-house, auditorium, black box theater, and your performing arts area, so located in this area. There are more tweaks in this one since you've last seen it. We've reduced the size of the practice rooms and added more of them. That was a change that you've, if you've noticed, it's a really small change from the last one. And then some industrial tech area that has slightly, that has also tweaked since the last time you reviewed that with, based on input from the staff. And then we have our five learning suites around the central spine, which is the media center. And at this end, we have some special education space, the RISE program, and Family Consumer Science. In between each of these learning suites is also an incubator lab, an unassigned space that teachers can go to for unique activities, whether it's an experiment that needs to stay up longer, if it's a science classroom, but more of a maker-type space, incubator lab on that. As we move to the upper level, this is all space that's unoccupiable. It's just high-volume space. But over here, we have science on the upper level in each learning suite, and then the collaboration space that was seen in all of them. Each house, our learning suite does have a control point to enter into it, so that they can zone, be zoned if they're for drills and the like, as well as acoustics. If they're doing, if that suite is doing something that's loud, they have the ability to close off those doors to the access to everything else. So with that, you can look down into the media center here and have access to the learning stair. So next, I am going to show you some renderings of the building. I will preface that we have not had our final interior design review, so they are subject to tweaks. So know that that is not finalized yet. But we thought we'd give you a taste for what it looks like. So as we come, maybe, I think I clicked. There are bigger files on the next page, so it might take a little bit of time. Maybe.
While you're waiting, do you know the capacity of the auditory? How many students does that hold? For how many people?
Exactly what we ended up with, we were
Approximately?
About 886.
Yeah.
We're close to
Our goal was, goal was 900. We're slightly less than that.
Okay.
But not by much.
Okay.
Maybe. We'll show renderings.
Mike.
One even. I tried that.
Did you?
Yeah. It's completely frozen.
You did?
Yeah, we tried that one.
Construction will go better than
Well, he brings that up. Are there any other questions about the plan of the concepts that were shown?
Maybe just some fun facts. What's the square footage looking like?
Including all of the mechanical mezzanines and access throughout, it's 326?
If you'd asked me, I would have said 320,000, so I'm glad it's close to that. I just think it's fun that the volume you're talking, that's a big
It's a big building. It is a very big building. Yeah, so, and you know, we utilized every inch of it. So that's what's important, is making sure that every aspect of it is leveraged for educational opportunities. So, okay.
The building itself faces which direction? The front door faces?
The front door faces west.
So like Marion Road?
Yep. And although the classrooms, with the exception of a few, yeah, so, yes, it's rotated a little bit, so it's more south than, but the, I'd say 95% of the classrooms' windows face north and south, which is the ideal directions for daylighting.
Just to get a size comparison, Lincoln, or Lincoln Just to get a size comparison, Lincoln High School is 305.
There, oops, I went too fast. So this is a rendering.
Here on the last...
Okay, so this is looking as if you're approaching the building. So you have your main entrance right here with the high-top canopy and accents of the school color. And then you can see the learning suites as they move down the space. We're really playing with the idea of the water moving through the falls and the rocks. So you'll notice the darker boulders represent the rocks of the falls, and then the white represents the water moving through it in the design of it. Here's a rendering of the courtyard space. You can see, as you look in, you can see that learning stair that has access to the courtyard. There's that main entrance again. This is a rendering of the commons, so we're the lunchroom area with the main stair that goes up to the upper level and access to the auditorium. The media center, it's open to below where it's sunken slightly. The learning stair, this has changed. The verticals are no longer a part of that. So that's something that we know has already changed, but the rendering has not been updated. But the learning stair incorporates handicap seating both at the lower level and the back, to be really incorporated into the overall design, not just sitting in the front. So you'll notice that that's part of the design aspect. And then this is one of the learning commons spaces in one of the suites. So you can see the classrooms here, and then that collaboration space and the focus rooms on the upper and lower level, and then that opening to up above. And that. Those are the renderings of the interiors that we have at this point and exterior. Does it spark any more questions?
I'm curious, since my daughter just finished her freshman year, and I was shocked at the number of people who don't use lockers.
Yes.
And so I'm curious how that went into this design. Do we have a one-to-one? Do we have a, what does that look like?
Yeah, so we explored one-to-one. We explored half, and then we looked at a wide range in between. And what we are showing is half-height lockers, and we are actually allowing that you could have every student get one. Once, we went to half-height lockers or just close to that. We're slightly under.
And the hope is, since we have the learning suites, most of your classes will be in there, so the lockers will be more accessible to the students.
At one point, we had only, we were shooting for half. But then when we started laying it out, we're closer to all than not.
Charlie, we ran that question by our student advisory group and just asked them, show of hands, how many of you use your locker? It's about half. And for those who did, said, what was it for? Mainly, they were involved in a sport.
I know for my daughter, she always just went and put all of her stuff in her sport locker, you know, at the beginning of it. But then when the season was over, and she was like, okay, now what do I need to, you know, so then she maybe started using it, but still not as frequently.
Not as frequently.
And when you, and when you... With your coats and boots, if you wear them, high schoolers don't typically wear those either.
And when you pencil out the space that they, it's amazing, yet you don't want to build a building where students who need a locker don't have one. So it's a bit of a catch-22.
Yeah, I like the idea of half. I think that's still a very generous amount of space for what they use it for.
We did look at plans also, so when you, if you need to add more, they can be incorporated into it.
Sure. Great, thank you.
The learning stairway thing, that's a neat open feature. I really like that.
Yeah. It'll have a nice screen that comes down so that they can use presentations there and stuff, so. Other questions?
Thank you, Vanessa.
For those of you who may not know me, I'm Tony Wiseman with Journey Construction, senior project manager. Very pleased to be able to present to you today the guaranteed max price for the project. Vanessa did a great job showing how beautiful it is, and I get to tell you what it costs. So I did have a handout for you guys to review also, but we do have it on the screen here. And what I would like to do is just walk you through the detail. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer that. Primarily, I'll be just reviewing the cost of the project, the budget of the project, and then also the schedule of the project, when it's going to start and when we're going to finish the project. So the first sheet we have here is just identifying the cost of the project in the different areas. We had it broken out into some different areas to identify some certain items that we felt were important. One is just the high school itself, the high school direct construction cost. That's primarily all the costs associated with the direct construction cost is $62,350,000. The tech ed allowance direct construction cost is $1,380,000. And then general conditions, general requirements, we have $1,499,000 in general conditions and general requirements is $1,744,000. We are carrying a contingency in the project. That's a contractual contingency for the construction management delivery system of 5% at the time of guaranteed max price. Insurance fees, excise tax bonds, and permits of another $4,378,000 for a total estimated high school cost of $74,732,238. Along with that included in the guaranteed max price is Terry Avenue. Terry Avenue, the direct cost of that is $940,000. That's all the total combined construction cost of the activities with inside that. We are also carrying another 5% contingency on Terry Avenue, and of course, insurance fees, taxes, bonds, and permits of another $57,117 for a total cost of Terry Avenue of $1,047,369. So all those costs above total up to a total guaranteed maximum price of $75,779,607 would be your total cost of the project.
And Terry cost, is that our cost, or is that the entire Terry project?
This is the entire Terry Avenue.
Will be our, yeah.
The next sheet just identifies all the design documents used. That really ties the cost, the budget that you saw there backs up by all the documents and all the criteria involved there. Schedule, schedule on the project, based upon a notice for seed here in May, the actual construction start in June. We're scheduled to complete the project by May 31 of 2021. Also along with there is some other design criteria that is scheduled out that the team is committed to following through with the design documents. Allowances are, just identified some minor costs with inside the project, not necessarily minor, but our allowances that were identified where the entire team and us worked out, costs associated with some design items that aren't necessarily totally complete yet. And that would be the overall executive summary of the guaranteed max price. We do have some more detail in the schedule that starts identifying when the constructions start and some envelope things that I could go into if you had some questions about it. But I think the start date and the end date is sufficient for today.
How do you feel about working in the rain?
Well...
In much.
We feel good about working in the rain.
And you were in the right spot.
Part of the, part of the process. It's, actually, I heard it was going to stop here in June.
Oh.
We'll believe that for now. So, thank you. And we're 233,000 under what we had estimated the cost was going to be during the bond election and the discussion going up to that. I know there was some erroneous information that was given out during the campaign, and I just want, I want folks to know that we are under budget for what we had projected. To me, that's very important, that that gets put out there accurately. Okay, any other questions?
Ken, if you'd allow me just to make a comment, this is a, this is a big night in terms of the, the markers that we have to hit between now and the, and the total completion of the bond, but between now and opening the doors to the new high school. This is a, this is a big night to get that GMP in tonight, to hear that we're under budget, to hear that we're on time. This is a, this is a really good sign. We'll see about the rain, but this is a really good sign.
Right, thank you very much.
I think once people start seeing movement out in that area, that I think the excitement will be more realistic to them. Right now, you know, you drive by, if you drive by, and it just, it's just a big old pile, not even a pile, it's just dirt, mud, you know. And so I think once people see that, the excitement is really going to grow. And as we have more and more conversations about the changes that will go with that, too, I think there's some nervousness and some anxiety about who's going to go to that school and things like that. But I think the overall excitement of that is going to be what people kind of get behind. And so, I agree, it's a, it's a big, it's an exciting night. You know, people are out of school now, but as they think about, you know, I'm a seventh grader or whatever, I might be going to this new school, and that's exciting. It's like a beautiful building, so a lot to be excited about.
And the groundbreaking's June 18 at 11:30, is that correct, out at the site?
So with that, I think we're asking for final approval of the plans and also the GMP. And I just wanted to just say thank you. I mean, I think it hit me today when we were in that media presentation, and Dr. Maher said, well, we just passed the bond in September, and I'm going, wow. And we're to this point today. That's amazing. And thank you for the steering committee and all the staff members that were part of this. So it's kind of, we did, we did a lot of work in a short, short period. So thank you for the architects and the Journey Group, and we're just starting, so. But a lot, a lot has happened.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the plan?
So moved to...
Second.
Further discussion. As I said in my little welcoming speech at the graduations, your graduation is a big deal. This is a big deal. We've, we've worked a long time to get to this point, and it's a big deal that we're here. It's, Yoman's work has been done by the steering committee, and every piece has been, has been put together, and we move forward. So it's great. Thank you all. Any other discussion? If not, we have motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, our fourth report of the evening is a Lennox School District tax sharing agreement. That report is coming to us tonight from our finance department. Here to present is Mr. Veek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. Sometime last year, both the Sioux Falls and Lennox School districts received an informal request by a landowner, our landowners, to have the two districts explore a minor boundary change in western Sioux Falls, and include a tax-sharing agreement similar to what we did with West Central a few years ago. Some members of the administration and the board president from each school district met. Board presidents were at one meeting, the administration, a couple more, over the last few months, and have arrived at a tentative agreement with Lennox regarding approximately 900 acres. It was 1,000 originally, but there's a slight change to our map. I'll show that to you in a second here. So it's a little over 900 acres of land west of Ellis Road and north of 41st Street. It's similar to the West Central agreement. It starts at 100% tax-sharing of the capital fund, but it's phased out over 20 years for residential property, once the land is annexed into the city. The difference is the, the agreement with West Central, that was already, it was already in, in the city. And it's over a longer period of time, because some of that won't be, won't be phased in, or won't be annexed into the, into the city for quite a while. Commercial property has a 40-year phase-out compared to the West Central agreement, where it had a, where there was no commercial property. That was, we knew where it was, so we carved around it when we did that agreement. That was the kind of originally where we started here, but we don't know where it's going to be. And you can't create any more new islands. So we said, we'll phase it out over a longer period of time. The, there's agricultural property. We'll pay 100% on that until it gets annexed into the district, and then it's zoned either commercial or, and then the clock starts ticking on that. The whole agreement will only last only till 2081. I mean, there's going to be an end date on it, so that if property never gets, never gets brought in or gets brought in really late into the district, at least there will be no payments beyond 2081. And then if the capital fund at any time is equalized, the general fund is equalized, and the special ed fund is equalized, then the tax-sharing part of the agreement would become null and void, because we'd be, the Sioux Falls will be sharing money that then gets equalized. So that doesn't make sense. Both administrations plan to bring an official MOU to the respective boards within the next couple of months. This is informational. Just, you can look at the map, this area here that's shaded, about 910 acres. This black area here on one of the, one of our maps, boundary maps, shows it as Lennox. It's showing up on another as West Central. So we kind of got to look that out to see which it is. But that's why I went from 990 acres down to about 910. So this area, this crosshatched area in there is the area we're talking about. So our recommendation is to have the board acknowledge the informational report on the pending tax-sharing agreement with Lennox School District, with the understanding that the administration will bring an MOU for official consideration by the board at a later meeting.
Questions for Todd?
This is just great for our parents and students who live on that west side, because there's confusion about district. I mean, we received calls in the fall, especially when parents realize they're not because of the patchwork that's out there. So I think this will be great to help alleviate some of that patchwork questioning out on that west side.
That little yellow box in the middle teeth?
Yeah. So that, no more, no more new islands, but there are islands.
Any other questions?
I mean, I think the west side is growing, 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 and so this is just another way for us to continue to educate kids in the very, very near vicinity of where we're at. I feel like we, I don't remember who said it, but when we were talking about our kind of max population of students in Sioux Falls, at that point, we had said like 30-ish, right?
Yep.
And so is there an estimate that could be shared about the number of students that may potentially?
It's non-scientific. If you'll allow me to throw out something non-scientific, and you're right, it's a good memory. When the city folks, Mike Cooper and Mark Cotter helped us figure out what our growth would look like and estimate what our capacity would look like, we got to about that 30,000-student mark, actually just a shade under. We think here we could, when this is built out, and it's highly developable, who knows what it will be, but it's highly developable, we think another 2,000 students probably, K-12. So some people have said, well, that's a new high school, or that's a new middle, no, that's K-12, probably another 2,000 students. So I think maybe instead of a short 30,000, you're looking at a strong 30,000-student school district when we're all, when we're all grown up.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, could I get a motion to acknowledge the information, please? If not, could I get a motion to acknowledge the information, please?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we are on to the canvas, the results of the school board election. Business manager Veek, I'll bet, does that for us.
Thank you. As you know, last Tuesday, we had an election. We have a motion in front of you. I'll read that here in a second. I'll say up on the screen is the results by Vote Center. The totals are also on this document as well. You all have that in front of you as well. We'll, I'll go through the totals here in just a second, but I'll read the motion for the record. Acknowledge the reading of totals by Vote Center and acknowledging the canvas of the results of the school board race of the Sioux Falls School District annual election held on May 21, 2019, for two three-year terms for office of member of the school board, with the results as follows. For two three-year terms, candidate Sarah K. Anderson received 994 votes. Candidate Laura Hubbell received 1,042 votes. Candidate Nan Baker received 2,854 votes. And candidate Carly Ryder received 2,854 votes also. And declaring Nan Baker and Carly Ryder as duly elected members of the school board for terms of three years, commencing with the annual meeting to be held on July 8, 2019.
That's the motion.
I move to approve said motion.
One second. Discussion.
I'd like to thank Bev and her team for all the work with the election, and thank you for doing that. And congratulations to Nan Baker and Carly.
I would just like to say that the tie is an interesting twist at the end, but I also want people to understand, unfortunately, we only had just under 4% voter turnout, which, as I tried to say many times, we make big decisions. We just talked about, you know, an almost $80 million building, and so I want people to engage, and I want people to participate in making sure that we're electing people who are representative of what our community wants. We have a lot of great things going on. And so this is a perfect example to say that every vote really does count. Because if there was only one position open, we would have had a tie. And so there are how many hundreds of thousands, well, not hundreds, but thousands of people who did not go to vote because they didn't think that it mattered. And it really does matter every single time. So my plea to our community is to engage in research and do your due diligence and participate because it really is an important decision.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and my congratulations also to Carly and to Nan on the win. You guys have done a great job. Anything else? We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Any other business to come before the board? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.